Number one worst thing about Biden is he ran for a second term when he wasn't ready or capable, I think of running for a second term. And realistically, I think that even though I think he'd be a much better president even now, even in a wheelchair than Trump is right now.
Disco, you're smart, man. How can you honestly believe that Joe Biden was a good leader? When you know that he was a puppet, you know that at least, at least with Donald Trump, you know, he's in control of his meats.
Who's been a better president? And so far, like the economy hasn't gotten better, prices haven't gotten better. The situation in foreign policy, he hasn't stopped the war in Ukraine. He hasn't stopped the conflict in Gaza. He promised he would do that stuff. And why can't we hold him to those promises? If he's promising, you know, the sun and the moon, he has not delivered. And the Congress is more, you know, stasis than it's ever been.
You should be thanking your lucky stars that Donald Trump is president because now you get to he in hall and get all mad. When in reality, for Joe Biden, you had to defend it, basically hospice patients. So you really should be happy and you're probably audience is going to grow exponentially under Donald Trump.
I'm talking about the Patriots during the Civil War. I'm talking about the Patriots during World War Two. I'm talking about Patriots throughout the course of this country. And if you're not willing to give your life for the Constitution, if you're not willing to give your life and your livelihood for the, your country, your American people, are you really a patriot? Do you really love this country?
I know.
He's gonna have the plane to use after he's president.
But this is the thing, if you can't beat him, if you can't beat him, sometimes you gotta join him. And you might not like that terminology, but.
Are you saying we gotta join? He, he mentioned terrorism. Now you're saying we should join them.
Join the Qatar.
I caught him looking at some websites, not illegal websites, just weird websites of, of drawings of My Little Pony in a sexual manner. And I did not think that was okay.
Now we have Trump. So I'll go through the polls. So who's the better president? We have Trump at 57, Biden at 25, and a 10 pound sack of potatoes is better at 18%.
What's up everybody? Welcome back to the channel. Okay. So no, you did not read the title of the video incorrectly. Yes, this debate actually gets interrupted by a city council meeting. It's one of the most fascinating things I've ever seen happen during a debate. I know it may sound quite absurd to say that, like those two things should not go together. A debate getting interrupted by a city council meeting. Well, you know, when we have Alex Stein on the scene, and just about anything could happen, folks. So it does this thing. It's funny. It's a pretty good debate too. I'm not gonna lie about that. You know, you, your expectations when Alex Stein is involved are kind of all over the damn place. But you know, he does a pretty good job. I'm not gonna lie about that. So let's go ahead and get into this. But before we do, y'all smash that like button for me. Subscribe if you're new around here. I'd love to have you guys. Because what we do on my normal videos, we read the news, we analyze the news, and then I point out all the manipulations. So you can be informed and understand how you're being manipulated by corporate press news articles. That's what we do. Y'all share this video anywhere and everywhere you can, because why the hell not? It's fascinating to have a debate interrupted by a city council meeting. I'm still having trouble saying that. Like putting those words together just doesn't, just doesn't sound right, does it? No, let me know down in the comments section. Y'all, y'all click that join button too. Help this channel expand and grow so we can get the message out about how you're being manipulated by corporate press news articles. But without any further ado, I swear, here it is, y'all.
You know, you hear people say.
Wait, it matters whether that breakdown is real, right? The breakdown is fake as fuck. It's about trade deficits, not about reciprocal tariffs. Everyone knows that shit and the policy doesn't make any sense. You can agree with that.
Disco, you just said it though. Should we have big trade deficits with these countries? Why don't we want less of a trade deficit?
Wait, if, so, so let me just bring it down to like the regular context. If you have something that you want to sell to me and I want to buy it, I'm getting a benefit from buying it. I guess, you know, you have a trade deficit with McDonald's. I don't think that you ever sell stuff to McDonald's. You buy stuff from McDonald's, but you buy stuff from McDonald's because you get a benefit from buying stuff with McDonald's. So trade deficits tell you very little about the, you know, the relative power advantage or who's getting ripped off or who's getting not ripped off. It's a fucking stupid metric to look at when you're looking at these trade deals. For example, like Vietnam, here's just one tangible example. Vietnam, of course, is selling more to America than we are selling to Vietnam. Does that make sense, right? But Vietnam does not have high tariffs on America. But yet, you know, Trump goes on stage and says, what, Vietnam has a 70% tariff on us? That's a complete lie. Vietnam is never going to be buying expensive American products to account for how much they're, they're selling into America. And so the metric just isn't indicative of which countries are screwing us over. It's just a lie and like Trump is fucking an idiot on this. And I, I hope that like that at least base fact, you can acknowledge that that sort of looking at trade deficits to calculate tariffs is fucking dumb. Can you agree with that at least?
Well, I would say, listen, I'm anti taxation. I think taxation is theft. I really wish we could get kind of, you know, do trade and not have to, you know, tax everybody to death. But I would say this, and even if.
Do you disagree with tariffs, right? Cause you disagree with taxes?
Well, I'm saying, I, listen, I don't like all the tariffs. I don't necessarily like that. I don't like people's stock portfolio. Mine went down a little bit. Not that I have that much money, but it did go down a little bit. But when it comes to the stock market relation to Donald Trump, I think, and I don't know if you'll agree with this, but do you not think that there's ups and downs? And that it's still very possible that the stock market could recover. I mean, isn't that, I mean, it's not, we're not in a point of no return, right? I mean, can we agree on that?
I typically don't just like look at the stock market and be like, this is the overall indicator of the health. I, I agree. There's things that Biden or Trump could do that have a negative effect on the stock market that in the long run could be good. That's all like, I'm not saying that the stock market is the end all be all. And it could even be that eventually the stock market starts growing. But what I think is going to happen is it's going to be growing at like a diminished way that it would have. We have to think about this in opportunity cost, not just in, is it growing right now? How much would it have grown? And I, I think it's not just the stock market. The stock market is moving in parallel with indicators of growth like GDP. And it's sort of promoting fears of price increases, which is why the Federal Reserve has not, you know, lowered interest rates. And so all of these indicators, a consumer sentiment is another big one. All of these are sort of in line together and it makes sense because it's not anything other than the tariff policy right now. Everyone is, maybe they're pricing in some of the tax cuts that the Republicans are planning. But in general, every time they announce more tariffs, consumer sentiment goes down. The American people don't agree with the tariffs. You yourself just said, you don't agree with the tariffs. But he's still insistent on crazy tariffs, even the ones that he's reduced right now. 30% on China, 10%, you know, across the board. If you would have told us that, you know, at the start of his term, he would have instituted those tariffs, that's a trade war. And that shit's going to be passed on to the regular consumer. These will have a larger marginal propensity to consume.
Well, and I want to say this though, what about this, Pisco, when he does do the tariffs? And then we see Hyundai, Korean company is going to build a $4 million plant in a state, like you said, like Alabama or Mississippi. We're going to return manufacturing that was in Mexico to America. And then I know this is RFK, but now you see Nabisco and a lot of these huge food manufacturing companies saying they're going to take out a lot of these toxic dyes that are in their food. So, I mean, you'd have to admit, there's going to be some, maybe the cookies might taste a little, little worse. So they get the recipe right, you know, maybe we need that red 40. And you know, maybe taxes are going to be a little higher, but I would say overall, if we get more jobs and safer food, isn't that better?
Well, if, I don't actually know if that's their goal, right? If their goal is to reshore production in the United States, why are they all of a sudden like celebrating these big wins on the supposed trade deals that occur? They're not actually trade deals. They're like announcements of future trade deals, like the UK one. They're not even like real trade deals. They're just saying, we will at some point have a deal. If their intention is just to reshore industrial policy or domestic production, then we shouldn't be looking for more free trade. But it seems like what's going on is the administration doesn't actually know what its aim is here. If the goal is to promote long-term reshoring into the United States, we would have more stable tariff rates and we would be firm on them. And we wouldn't be looking for, you know, more free trade. Or if we're looking, for example, to add to our, you know, budget and actually have tariff revenues, we wouldn't be looking to have trade deals to get rid of the tariffs. So it seems like it's a, at a very least, you can agree, it's a, a, a very chaotic policy. Nobody can plan for the future. And so if you're a domestic investor in the United States, why are you going to invest in a five-year plant in America? If you don't know what the tariff rate is going to be, because it changes every fucking week, every week, there's a new policy. Tariff on, tariff off, tariff on, tariff off. So no one can plan for the future. And that's, I think, not a good environment for reshoring domestic production.
Okay. So tariffs, this is one I love talking about, and I always pose this question and I never get an answer to this question, right? Like if, if the tariffs are so bad, right? Okay. So if it's a tax on you, and that's all it is, it's just a, a consumer tax of the country that imposed the tariff on everybody else. Why do they call it a trade war? For one, why would that, that would, that should be internal tax policy, shouldn't it? If it's just a consumer tax, why do they call it a trade war? Why do these countries scramble? They just scurry on over to the United States to make trade negotiations. Why are they worried about it? Why would China come out and say, oh, well, the United States is bullying China over trade policy? It's like, what? If it's an internal tax policy, why is China pissed off about it? That's what I would love to know. Why are they scrambling to work out some sort of trade negotiations, right? I, I never understood that. I can never get an answer to that question because, hang on just a second. It's because it's not just an internal tax policy for crying out loud. And I've proven that on this channel several times. Now, look, I get it. It's going to cause prices to go up because they, they've got to make some money. They can't just absorb that tariff. They can't. They have to raise prices and I get that. But look, Donald Trump is cutting taxes all the way across the board for everybody. Even people that don't pay taxes. Think about that for a second, right? You know, the, the liberals, they always say, wow, these, these tax cuts for the rich, they're disproportionate. Well, of course they're disproportionate because the rich disproportionately pay more taxes than everybody else. Like that, that argument just doesn't line up with logic for crying out loud. Like we want things to be logistical around here, clearly, right? We want things to make sense. That doesn't make any sense. You telling me that there's some disproportionate impact on these tax cuts doesn't mean anything. Because the rich disproportionately pay more taxes, the richer and richer that you get. And as a matter of fact, the poor people in this country don't even pay taxes. There's many, many millions of folks that actually get more money back from the government than they pay out in taxes. That's fascinating. Don't you think through tax credits? So, all right. So getting back to the point, all right, Donald Trump's tax cuts to kind of offset this. Why is this a trade war for one? Okay. Why are these companies absorbing the tariffs? And they are absorbing the tariffs. Not all of it, but they are. Why would they do that? That makes no logical sense. Why would they absorb that tariff? Maybe because they have to. Maybe because they have to. Have you ever thought about that? That it's not just a consumer tax? Maybe, I don't know, but let's keep going.
But Biden was facing like unprecedented economic challenges and we had a soft landing. And yes, prices for a while were inflated, but over time, the economy was picking up. And it was never into a recessionary position. And we were never really seeing the kind of threats that we're seeing right now vis a vis, you know, our trading partners. And so I, I think that he left us in a great spot economically and he actually was doing the hard work of bringing back manufacturing to America, which is investing, for example, in chips and science. Investing in America's infrastructure, which, you know, Trump, Trump is not seemingly willing to do.
Guys. Right now I'm debating some libtard about Donald Trump. All right. So, hey mayor, uh, thank you guys for having me. Everything's going good in Capel. Oh, my name's Alex Stein, 7509 Inwood Road. What you just saw though, is the first black man, I believe, to ever come to this council and ask for what he asked for. And I looked at your face and some of you guys, I didn't know if I was at a city council meeting or a Klan rally. I mean, some of the way y'all looked at that African American, y'all looked at him as less sane. And I don't think that's cool. I don't look at that man as less sane. I look at him better than me. And that's why I feel like we should treat, you know, people that are underprivileged like him. You see him, he's an ex-convict. He accidentally murdered somebody, vehicular manslaughter. And a lot of people, they always say, oh, he murdered somebody. He's a bad person. Not me. I think we should look at a murderer and give them the same respect, you know, if they paid their dues. They paid their, you know, social justice, their, their crime to society, then they should be a free man. And I'll be honest, like, Unc is, he has some serious issues. I caught him looking at some websites, not illegal websites, just weird websites of, of drawings of My Little Pony in a sexual manner. And I did not think that was okay. And so I reported him to the police for that. And we're having issues with, with the police and law enforcement in Capel not arresting him for that because that My Little Pony brony stuff is not good. So with all that being said, right now, we're in Capel, in the greatest city in America. Did you saw, Capel got rated the best city in America? Did you see this mayor? Yes, you did. For the people playing at home, Capel did get rated the best city. Why? Because it's mainly white people that aren't going to rob you and aren't going to kill you. And is that, you know, is that a real statement? I don't know. I'll let you be the judge of that. But we look at our crime stats, we look at the demographics of the city and I'll tell you what, it's safe as hell. So I'm happy that Capel is a city where I don't have to worry about a Venezuelan gang banger coming over here and trying to manipulate me or do something to my girlfriend or do something to my ex-wife, Deborah. I don't have to worry about that at all because Capel is a safe city. And the only criticism I have is you guys could have treated Unc a little more respect. He is a black guru. His son was murdered and I believe was sacrificed to the Illuminati. So he's a very powerful guy. He's connected to the rapper Nelly, I'm sure. And he, he does not like Kanye West, so don't worry, we're not making trouble there. No, no swastika situation with Unc. He's a very pro Israel. I think he's Jewish, actually. He's a Black Hebrew Israeli. So with all that being said, I just want to say that Donald Trump is the greatest president. And you know who's the greatest mayor? You, Mayor West. You're one of the nicest guys. You're bedside manner. And listen, you got a ragtag bunch. You got to deal with all these councilmen. I know Mike, the city manager is always giving you hell and you're sending these emails like, Mike, I'm the mayor. And he's like, I'm the city manager. You're the real boss and you make this city great. And that's why the cowgirls and the cowboys of Capel are such great, fine young people. God bless this city. God bless you. God bless Donald Trump. Thank you. Alex, that was something. Oh my God.
Okay. So you guys might be furiously typing away on your computer, looking for that website. I can promise you folks, it does not exist in my due diligence of me being a commentator and wanting to give you guys the facts. Fact is, that website doesn't exist. I took three hours and searched and searched furiously, typing away, trying to find this website for the My Little Pony stuff. And it, it just, I couldn't find it anywhere, folks. I don't think it exists. Fact check, false. So I, I don't really know what to do with this information, to be honest with you, except to give it out to you guys to let you know that you can stop typing on your computers, that that website does, does not exist. And I'm sorry, that is a crying shame that we cannot go look at weird pictures of My Little Ponies. Oh, for any reason at all, but let, let's keep going.
Ancillary figures are not main figures. Believe it or not, there are people that will pretend to be MAGA that aren't really Trump supporters. So forget, forget Trump being sabotaged or whether you think he's like full power. I would say that he's a president, he's obviously the most powerful man in the world, but even the most powerful man in the world has a deal with the red tape and people that are going to try to sabotage him on his own side. So that's just what I talk about when control, you think he has all the control. I would tend to disagree a little bit, but I think he has more control of this presidency than last. So I'll concede that. I'll concede that. But also with Donald Trump, when we look at his, you know, track record in the first hundred days, you're talking about what has he done that people like? Now, I'm going to say the criticism that conservatives have of Trump, they don't like that he's a little too easy on abortion. You hear people get mad about that. And, and you know, I, I'm anti-abortion, but I can understand why people would want to have an abortion. In the instance of rape and incest, I believe you should have an abortion. That's rape. I mean, I'm not that crazy to make a rape victim keep a baby, even though I think it is still murder. But things that Donald Trump did do good that people love, January 6th. You probably do think that was an insurrection. It was the worst thing ever. I don't. So him at least freeing those January Sixers, the conservatives would say that was a major victory. For not just the, all the January Sixers, but for the First Amendment, for the right to.
So did you like when he freed that, when he freed that pedophile Jan sixer? Did you like that?
No, but I didn't even know. Was there a pedophile Jan sixer? I didn't even know.
There sure was. Oh, there sure was. These people attacked cops, Alex, come on.
Let's argue. Who, first of all, January 6th, I think there was cops there, you know, age of provoicatur. So that's why I'm a little empathetic to the January Sixers or a lot empathetic. But if we're going to talk about pedophiles, well, I'll say this, Dennis Hatcher was a conservative speaker of the house, got caught being a pedophile. So there are conservatives that are pedophiles, but I would think that the liberals in the Democrat party leads the league in pedophiles. I mean, if we're gonna, if we're gonna do a pedophile.
You're gonna have to demonstrate that, but, but needless to say, I'm pointing to a specific concrete action taken by the president, which is he freed the fucking traitor insurrectionists who attacked cops and tried to steal the 2020 election. That shit's fucked up. And even if you think that Trump actually won the 2020 election.
Which I do, which I do.
You're a fucking idiot moron. All right. Sorry for saying that, but like.
Well, that's fine. That's fine. I've been called numerous, but let me make this point real quick because, because I'm sorry, I wanted to go. But with the stolen election, I can see why people are like, oh, it wasn't stolen. It's been yada, yada, yada. It's been investigated a hundred times over in Georgia. They, you know, they proved it wasn't this and that. I get it. I get it. I get all that. The legal, you know, he legally lost the election. I will admit that. But when it comes to the results of the election, 2020 was one of the most unique elections in that it was the first time we had mass mail-in ballots. Now, Donald Trump, conservative, when it came to in-person voting, Donald Trump won all 50 states, even California, even the most liberal states when it came to in-person voting. Now, when it came to mail-in ballots, Joe Biden, you can check this stat, won all 50 states when it came to mail-in ballots. Now you're going to say, well, obviously liberals were more worried about COVID, so they stayed home to vote, which, you know, I'll concede.
Do you agree with that? Do you agree with that?
I do. No, no, no. But I'm saying, look, I'll concede that. I'll concede that. But, but I think that the mail-in ballots, you're like, Alex is so crazy, so on. I think that set up the ability for there to be more fraud. But then this is where I think that it proves more, I feel less like a conspiracy theorist, even though I am one, proud conspiracy theorist. Is that there is nearly 10 million missing voters from 2020 to 2024. So how can you explain that?
Well, I can explain it. Alex, Alex, I can explain it. Ready? Actually, there was voter fraud in 2020. Trump committed a shit ton of voter fraud in 2020. It was just too big to rig and that's the discrepancy in the 10 million is that Joe Biden's win was so, wait, I just want to say, Joe Biden's win was so big that the fraud that Trump committed, it was too big to rig and therefore that's the discrepancy that you're seeing. You agree with that?
No, not, not, I believe, I'm just, I'm not.
What do you mean?
That Trump was on rigging it, that the Democrats had, they had the infrastructure to do this.
It's obvious. It's obvious that Trump was trying to rig it, but Joe Biden's win was so fucking beautiful and big, they couldn't do it.
You gotta be kidding that you actually believe that. If anybody was rigging it, they won the mail-in ballots. If that was, if that was the case, why wouldn't Trump stuff the ballots in conservative areas?
He literally tried to. Wait, have you not seen this?
Ballot harvesting. To be fair, ballot harvesting is legal. So that's why you can say that they legally stole the election.
He's trying to answer your question. Let's hand to Pisco.
Yeah, it was. So, so Trump was doing so much voter fraud in 2020, but because everyone loved Biden so much in the mail-in ballots, it overcame the, the ballot stuffing that was occurring in the in-person day of voting. Uh, it was too big to rig. So that's the discrepancy of the 10 million and that's why you're seeing.
You're smoking bad weed or something, dude. You cannot believe it.
That's what you guys fucking sound like when you do this shit, by the way. That's what you guys sound like when you have no evidence whatsoever of voter fraud.
Exactly. So I knew you were being disingenuous.
You can't disprove anything. You can't disprove anything I just said. And, and I have just as much evidence for what I just presented as you do for what your theory is.
Yeah. Okay. But well, I know you like to bait terms and this and that, Occam's razor, right? Well, I mean, what would be the easiest outcome when you look at the fact that Joe Biden won all 50 states with mail-in ballots and Donald Trump won all 50 states?
It was too big to rig.
Well, okay, listen, legally, legally Biden won. I agree with you on that. They investigated, legally won. I just think that it was fortified. I think it's funny business.
You mentioned before that you said the Democrats are the party of pedophiles. Well, then why hasn't Trump released the Epstein files? He promised to do it.
That's a big criticism of, of mine.
What's Pam Bondi doing? What is she waiting for?
Okay. So that's something that we need to discuss. Like I, I really am tired of hearing all these people talking about, you know, Dominion machines and all this other nonsense about fraud in the election. You know, Donald Trump did prove there was a little bit of fraud, but it wasn't enough to overturn the results of the election. And I have a pretty good explanation as to why Democrats won. They had a better ground game, folks. They went and they worked really hard on procedure, changing rules, changing laws. But what's messed up about that is that in certain cases like Pennsylvania and a couple of other places, they changed the rules around elections to make legal ballot harvesting and a few other things, just rule changes, minor procedural stuff that violated their own constitution. And that constitutionality question was never brought up to the Supreme Court, although it should have been, Texas v. Pennsylvania. The Supreme Court decided not to take that case and they should have. That is a spineless maneuver by a quote unquote conservative majority Supreme Court, right? They didn't want to look at that. I don't know why. That question needs to be answered. Can a state violate its own constitution to change rules and change laws to give one party an upper hand in an election? That dilutes the votes for the rest of the country for crying out loud. And that's exactly what Democrats did. Is it underhanded? Very much so. Is it legal? Well, yes, as a matter of fact, now it is because they changed the laws and rules around doing so to make it legal. That's what happened, folks. Mail-in ballots. He brings up a pretty good point right there. You know, Donald Trump won all 50 states in in-person voting. That's fascinating. You know, if we look at all of the abnormalities in the 2020 election, it is fascinating, some of the stuff that went on, but none of it's conclusive, folks. So that, that's why we need, you know, the MAGA people, regular conservatives out there that believe that Donald Trump won the 2020 election. Look, stop. It makes you look like a crazy conspiracy theorist lunatic. It's what it makes you look like. So stop with all that. The easy explanation is that Democrats had a better ground game. When conservatives were trying to play by the rules of COVID and not go out and not interact with people and do all this other stuff. Democrats were violating their own policies, going out state to state to state to change rules and change laws to make sure that people would vote by mail. Now, we've had a lot of evidence come out recently about China trying to get themselves involved in the 2020 election by injecting fake driver's licenses to like thousand, tens of thousands of people to make fake mail-in ballots. But hang on just a second. That was caught. That operation was snuffed out. As a matter of fact, now the FBI, they kept this secret for some reason. I don't know why they kept this secret. And this was just recently exposed by Cash Patel. Well, I wonder why they would keep that secret. That should be headline news. That should have been the biggest news of the year outside of COVID, right? Outside of the riots. That should have been huge news to find this out. I wonder why they kept that secret. I wonder why they kept that on the download. I don't know. Maybe all the conspiracy that was going on about Dominion machines and the fact that some of them were hooked up to the internet and they were vulnerable to vote switching. Like, once again, that may have happened on a widespread, on a widespread case. We just can't prove it. There, there's no way to prove it at this point. So to me, that argument is null and void. Did it play a part? I'm almost certain of that, folks. Almost certain of that, but we cannot prove it. So once again, we got to void that out. We just got to look at what can be proven. Texas v. Pennsylvania was an atrocity. As a matter of fact, the 2020 election was not the most freest and fairest election in American history. It was not the most secure election. We must admit that to all those liberals out there like, it's the freest and fairest election. No, it was not. The abnormalities alone prove that it was not the freest and fairest election out there, right? I have no problem saying that Joe Biden won that election. They did it through underhanded means. Sure. I'll give them that. But it, it's all legal for crying out loud. Is it legal to cheat in certain instances? Yeah, I guess it is. I guess it is. If you go and change the rules and laws to make cheating legal, then yes, it is. That's how I concede that, folks. And that's, that's what happened from all the evidence that I can look up, from all the research that I've done. That's what happened. A lot of people, you know, not counting the fact that a lot of people voted by mail that would not vote otherwise. That's also a factor. And that, you know, kind of answers the question of Alex Stein's question. Where's the 10 million missing votes? That's where it is, folks. A lot of people, they just don't care to get up and go out and vote. They had a, a mail-in ballot show up to their house. They're like, man, I'm not doing anything else. I might as well go ahead and vote. You know, and the sentiment against Donald Trump was kind of high because of COVID and all this other stuff. So there's, there's many explanations as to why Donald Trump lost that election. At least we can say, if it would not have been for COVID, Donald Trump would have definitely won that election. I can say that with all honesty. If it would not be for mail-in ballots, Donald Trump would have won that election because he increased in popularity from 2016 to 2020. He increased in voter turnout from 2016 to 2020 by a wide margin. Just look at the numbers, folks. He had 63 something million votes in 2016. He had 72 or 73 million, almost 73 million. That's almost 10 million more votes. That's the most massive increase in voter turnout in an election in American history for an incumbent president. He should have won that, that election outright, but he didn't. Mail-in voting, folks. Mail-in ballots is what caused him that election, but let's keep going.
Well, right, but, but this is 20, can you admit that what's going on with Trump is a thousand times, or at least any amount? I'll just give it more easy. Isn't this worse than what Hunter Biden is alleged to have done?
Well, with the Ukrainian gas company, I would say that now we're in a never-ending war and a proxy war with Russia. Because you can argue potentially because of the, you know.
Because of Hunter?
Well, yes, because that's why they had to hope quid pro quo. I mean, that basically it was because of Hunter, because Joe Biden put in an effectless leader because he didn't want to get exposed for getting paid by Burisma. So they had a perfect.
But Hunter, Hunter, I believe Hunter's tenure on Burisma was after the Maidan. He, he joined the board of Burisma afterwards. He's not the cause of what's going on.
Well, yeah, I mean, you and I both concede, like Donald Trump gets a plan from Qatari. It's not a free plan. He's going to owe Qatari a favor. But the reason why I think that is a good thing because I think Donald Trump will actually want to negotiate some peace in the Middle East. I'm sick of Gaza and I'm sick of the Gaza Strip being a war zone. I want to be able to go vacation in Israel. I want to be able to go, uh, have a, a world where the, the Middle East and Jews and Muslims are constantly killing themselves. And I think Donald. And I think Donald Trump.
Me too, but, but look at what Netanyahu has planned, right? The New York Times and other, uh, things have reported that they now have official stated plans to just totally take over Gaza and to totally annex Gaza and to either A, kill all the people in Gaza as part of a genocide, or B, force them into neighboring Arab countries, which will start regional conflicts and wars. And nobody knows that Israel.
You read that the Jewish Journal.com or something? I mean, I know, I've heard that too, but I mean, come on, do you really think? I've heard Donald Trump say he's gonna build a hotel in Gaza, but I've not heard Donald Trump say that he's going to.
No, but Israel is, Israel is planning, Israel is planning on a permanent occupation of, like a permanent physical encroachment into Gaza.
I think you could argue that Israel's been planning that since Ben Gurion created Israel, right? I mean, I mean, that's never not been their plan of making Israel bigger.
That sounds like it's gonna entail, that sounds like it's gonna entail suffering and conflict, regional conflicts that are going to be unavoidable. I mean, Israel's gonna keep pushing the issue and I don't think that Trump is strong enough to stand up to them.
And I'm a person that believes in a two-state solution. I mean, I think that's the only way to actually be fair, but it's not going to be fair after October 7th. So listen, when it comes to Trump, though, when it comes to the Middle East, I just, I would think that he's gonna be, and I'm not think, I know that he's gonna be a much better leader than Joe Biden, because Joe Biden didn't do anything. You know that he was, he was really handcuffed because of his party, a lot of pro-Palestinian support, but Joe Biden's one of the biggest benefactors from the AIPAC lobby. So he was in a moral conundrum.
At least, I, I will say, at least, no, Joe Biden did not do a good job, I think, on many issues. He got, uh, played by, by Netanyahu. And so I agree that that was not his best moment, um, in his presidency. I agree with that, but Trump is way, way worse. Wait, wait, don't you, wait, you support the withdrawal from Afghanistan, correct?
I did a hundred percent. And Trump is the one that, that said that. I just didn't like the way, I didn't like the execution. I think we all agree the execution was.
Why, why, why didn't you like the execution?
Well, because we were watching videos of Afghani guys hanging off a seven or, you know, whatever, C-32 airplane. And, you know, it's just, it's unpleasant. It didn't need to be like that. I think that we could have probably negotiated with them.
Yeah, but Trump said he wanted to stay, he, he wanted a permanent, uh, force in, uh, Bagram Air Base. Trump said he would never wanted to leave. He wanted, yes, he wanted to leave some, you know, some areas of Afghanistan, but he wanted America to have a permanent presence in Afghanistan. He said he wanted to keep hold of Bagram Air Base. That's gonna, you know, require hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of American troops to maintain a permanent presence, presence in Afghanistan. So yeah, Trump initially negotiated a deal for withdrawal, but in recent, um, years, he's, he said he would never have left Bagram Air Base. You can, you can find the quote on that. And so I don't think that, uh, Trump would have ever left Afghanistan. I think Biden actually did the hard thing. He actually did it. He actually did leave Afghanistan. And yeah, it wasn't perfect, but that was.
I agree with Biden leaving Afghanistan. I like, I, I agreed with that a thousand percent. I just did not like the execution. I think you'd have to agree the execution wasn't great. Maybe you'll say it's hard to execute a withdrawal from, you know.
Yeah, it's, it's hard. I understand. It's complex. I get that. But it just, it was done and we looked like, we, we looked like a bunch of, uh, amateurs doing it.
I mean, you have to admit that it was, it just didn't look good.
Are you driving in circles?
No, no, I'm not. It looks like it, but I'm not.
No, no, but like, let, let's be clear about something. So on the Afghanistan withdrawal, I think Joe Biden was going against a lot of sort of institutional actors. Some might say the deep state who didn't want him to leave and he did the strong thing and he actually left Afghanistan.
No, no, it, it's, I don't want to, I want you to finish that thought. You are right. So you do kind of admit there could be a deep state within the Democratic Party that is stopping Joe Biden. As I'm saying, you do concede that?
I'm using your terminology. I'm using your terminology to refer to like.
But when I say, when I say deep state, it's not necessarily George, well, no, no, I just want to clarify for your audience because I'm happy to be in front of your audience. I know they all hate my guts. I don't really care. But say, it's not all like George Soros. When I say deep state, I'm talking about like the unelected bureaucrats that have been in the FBI, been in the CIA, that have been in these alphabet agencies for forever that really are the shot callers. You know what I mean? So like, is it deep state?
So to the extent that they're around and to the extent that they're advising the president, Joe Biden stood up to them and said, no, we're leaving. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna have, and it's his long stated position ever since Obama's term that he didn't want, he wanted to leave Afghanistan. I thought that was a strong thing for him to do and he did so in the public interest. The problem is with Trump's foreign policy, everyone has to question that. You have to admit, dude, Trump is corrupt as fuck. You have to admit that.
Well, this is the thing. I would say that any president or billionaire, uh, would have to be maybe, maybe have to do, you know, you don't become a billionaire without, you know, busting a few heads. I think that that's obvious, but.
The Trump coin thing is corrupt. Can you admit that? Trump coin's corrupt?
Let me know. Let me finish the statement. The only reason I'm, I'm, I'm gonna say Trump is not corrupt is because he's been investigated a million times over and all of those sham trials that they tried to get, like he raped E. Jean Carroll. You know, he didn't rape E. Jean Carroll. Like, it's just, because they've thrown so many fake things at him, it's hard for me to maybe give him credit where they could be right, where they said maybe he did catch him doing fraud.
Do you think the Trump coin thing is corrupt? That thing's corrupt, right? That shit's fucked.
Talking about the, the Bitcoin thing, uh.
The Trump, the, the, his cryptocurrency thing.
Yeah, they, well, because he's doing two, he's doing three different things. I think he's doing the five, what is it? The million dollar green card, right? Where you can just buy a green card.
Yeah, that's different. That's also fucking dumb. That's dumb. That's for the oligarchs.
Yeah, I mean, that's dumb. Whatever. You got a million bucks. I mean, at least you're getting, we're getting a good citizen, but whatever. Okay, okay. You don't like that. I say that that's not that bad. That's a million dollars. Obviously investing in this country. You care about it. But we're talking about either the Trump gold coin or the, the cryptocurrency, because there's two things, right? Isn't he selling a coin as well?
I, I'm, I'm talking about the Trump coin. This is like the.
Yeah, Trump coin, the crypto, okay.
Crypto currency, yeah.
I was just trying to clarify because I think he's actually also selling like a gold mint coin.
Physical coin.
Yeah, like a physical coin too.
No, I'm talking about the crypto coin, which has a bunch of foreign holders and that people are using. Um, and which is a humongous conflict of interest. Don't you agree that's corrupt as fuck?
Well, I don't really trust a lot of this cryptocurrency stuff and you and I both know Donald Trump doesn't even know.
So is this corrupt? Do you agree this is corrupt?
I don't know. I don't know if it's corrupt.
Do you suspect it is? Do you suspect it's probably corrupt?
Well, do you think Haq Tua is a mastermind manipulator from?
I'm not saying, wait, wait, that's a total dodge, but I'll answer the question. I think the Haq Tua point was, I think it was a rug pull. I think it was a rug pull. And I think that that's why she.
What I'm saying is, do you think that she was actually in on it or did she get manipulated in a crypto deal because she was probably naive and didn't?
I have no idea. I have no idea. I'm gonna give less, here, I'm, I'm happy to have this distinction. I'm gonna give more agency to the President of the United States than to Haq Tua. Is that a fair thing to say?
Well, in the sense, it's not unfair, but in the sense of crypto, a younger person.
You're treating them like a fucking child. You're saying they should be treated like Haq Tua.
My dad is a successful business guy. My dad doesn't know how to use, he barely knows how to use email. So my dad's not stupid because he doesn't know how to work a computer well. Do you see what I'm saying? Like Donald Trump probably doesn't know how to freaking, he knows how to use a cell phone, but Donald Trump's probably not, didn't know how to transfer money from a crypto wallet.
So will you say he's incompetent? He's incompetent or he's hiring people who are corrupt?
Maybe he's incompetent when it comes to crypto. Yeah. I mean, I think, I don't think he's a cryptocurrency expert.
I think you're giving, you give so many like excuses for Trump that you would never give to like Joe Biden. Like, I, I think if I asked you, is Joe Biden corrupt?
I give Joe Biden a, a, a lot of deference. I believe I get, I think Joe Biden is better than Kamala Harris would have been. I mean, I think she is really incompetent. At least Joe Biden.
But you think both those people are corrupt, right? You think that Joe Biden and Kamala Harris are corrupt, right?
Come on, you know that Joe Biden's done corrupt stuff. You know that.
Just like, why can't you say that of Trump? Why can't you say that of Trump?
I'm, what I'm saying is Trump may have done something corrupt.
No, but you say that he has done, right? So for Joe Biden and Kamala Harris, they have done corrupt stuff, but you won't say that of Trump because I think you have friends that you need to keep happy. And I think if you were saying, yeah, Trump has done corrupt things, I don't think that they would be, it'd be like looking at you twice. And I think that you're concerned about that.
It's not even like that because I'm just trying to think like, what, what law has he broken? Because he's been investigated so much. I just feel that what happened in New York was such a sham trial.
Okay, so touching on several topics right there, but I, I want to talk about the cryptocurrency nonsense right quick. A lot of people, they're going after Trump hard on that and rightly so, to be honest with you, because the cryptocurrency nonsense, the Trump coin, the meme coin, whatever the hell you want to call it, doesn't, it doesn't look good. I mean, the President of the United States making money off of a cryptocurrency for crying out loud? Like, that just, it does, the optics are terrible on that. I'm not gonna lie about that. Like, I wish Trump would leave that alone, but think about that for a second. This was created before Donald Trump became president. Sure, he had his, his ambitions of becoming president. Yeah, give him that. Okay, whatever. I don't, I don't care about his ambitions. He still had this going on before he became president. You can't just say, I'm not doing this anymore. You, you can't just stop doing it. Okay, so he's in a very tough spot with this. Kind of like with the Qatari plane. It's a gift to the Department of Defense. It's not a gift to Donald Trump. I'm tired of the corporate press and everybody lying about this. Okay, it's a gift from their Ministry of Defense to our Department of Defense. You can say what you want. Sure. Does Trump owe him a favor for that? Maybe so. But that's how foreign policy works, folks. You scratch my back, I scratch yours. That's not necessarily corrupt, right? Like, we can all agree to that. Come on. Like, this is how foreign policy operates. Countries do favor, favors for each other, trade negotiations, all this other nonsense, right? Donald Trump is the foreign policy president. Just look at all of the wars that he stopped. He's stopped, at, at this point, seven wars. Sure, has he stopped the big ones yet? Not yet, but they are being worked on. That is much better than what you can say Joe Biden was doing. Joe Biden would have funded the Ukraine war until the end of freaking time. He would have bankrupted this nation to fund that Ukraine war. All, all on some sort of ego trip, I think. Like, that's all it was with Joe Biden. Right? Now let's get to Afghanistan and what Pisco said right there. Oh, well, Donald Trump said he would have stayed in Bagram. Like, saying that you would have, you would not have left Bagram Air Force Base does not mean that Donald Trump would, if he would have still been president, would have still had a presence at Bagram Air Force Base. What he was saying, this is what liberals do. They'll take whatever Donald Trump says and because Donald Trump doesn't speak with the utmost precision on every single thing, they'll take what he says and they'll flip it around and throw out the worst possible case scenario as to what is going on. This is what Donald Trump said. The sky is falling. It's the apocalypse, essentially, with everything Donald Trump says. What he was saying is he would not have taken the action to leave Bagram Air Force Base in the way that Joe Biden ordered it to be abandoned and go over here to this other airport to get out of the damn country. No, he would have stayed at Bagram for a while. The, 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 uh, exit from Afghanistan would not have been as rushed. He would have kept more troops until all the civilians got out. That was the plan as a matter of fact. Right? And what Joe Biden did with all this back and forth with his military advisors was, that was the plan. That, that was Trump's plan. That's what was supposed to happen. But what did Joe Biden do? Coming in with his ego, thinking he knows better than these military advisors, because they are the ones that made up that plan in the first place under Donald Trump. He says, I don't want to do anything that's connected with Donald Trump. We're gonna change this. We're gonna do something right antithetical to what Donald Trump was gonna do and we're gonna do it better. And what happened? Disaster, folks. Disaster. It, it's utterly insane as to the reason why those 13 service members lost their life at Abbey Gate. That was entirely on Joe Biden, right? I'm not one to usually blame something like that on the president. I know Ish rolls uphill when it comes to the government. You know, the, the man on the top is ultimately the one responsible for these things. But in that instance, that was totally Joe Biden's decision to do that and it created a damn disaster, right? There's nothing else to be said about that. That was completely Joe Biden's fault because he decided not to listen to his advisors that had a plan, a working plan that they had been working toward for months and months and months and months. And if you all of a sudden just change those plans and say, I want to do something different. I want some, some odd symbology. Let's get out on September 11th, on the 20th anniversary. Like, it was really, really insanely stupid to, to say the least. That's about as nice as I can be about that whole situation. But, you know, liberals, they just don't see this. They, they want to ignore the bad about Biden. Biden was not in control of the government, right? You want to talk about the deep state? The four years of Joe Biden, that's what the deep state looks like running this country. And it was an utter disaster, utterly disaster. That, that's all I can say about that. Open borders, wild inflation, flagrant violations of court orders all over the place. Censoring Americans, uh, raiding Americans' homes for no apparent reason whatsoever, right? Weaponizing the federal government in its entirety, right? You might just think, oh, well, he just weaponized the FBI. No, he weaponized everything from the FBI all the way to the EPA, to the Department of Education, to everything was weaponized against you and me. Fascinating, that is. I don't know how we can sit here and have a debate on who was the better president? Biden or, or Donald Trump? Biden will go down in history as the worst president in American history. Now, Donald Trump might not be the best. I think he's the best president of my lifetime, not in American history. But he's far, far from the worst. Let's keep going.
Let's talk Biden now. So this is why I think Biden was a phenomenal president, except for a couple of key issues. So here are the worst things about Biden. Number one worst thing about Biden is he, um, ran for a second term when he wasn't ready or capable, I think, of running for a second term. And realistically, I think that even though I think he would be a much better president, even now, even in a wheelchair than Trump is right now, um, I think that he wasn't up to the task. And so he betrayed what he said was his promise to restore the soul of the country, which meant eliminating Trump, but he was defeated by Trump ultimately. And Trump had the last laugh on that. And so that's a huge mark against Biden. Um, and, and in general, I think also some of the pardons, though they pale in comparison to Trump's pardons of the January Sixers. I think those were corrupt as well. I've said so as much. But there's no comparison in terms of the accomplishments between Biden and Trump term two so far. Uh, Biden was already getting major bipartisan wins, or at least on the way to get major bipartisan wins at this time in his tenure. He had passed the American Rescue Package. He had passed, or was on the way to passing the bipartisan Infrastructure Act. He had major legislative wins in terms of, um, you know, bipartisan gun safety measures, uh, bipartisan, um, investment in, you know, America's roads and bridges and that kind of thing. Um, he made the CFPB stronger. He made labor protections stronger. So this is all, I think, the work of a, of a strong Democratic presidency that was focused on, yeah, domestic production, on labor, on things, by the way, you know, a, a step away from the neoliberal era of Clinton, Bill Clinton and Barack Obama, and I think to more production-oriented, more domestic labor-focused presidency. I think those were all highly positive. And so in general, I think he was a great president and the best president of my lifetime.
Wow, the best president of your lifetime. That's, that, that has to be new. Okay, I'm trying to log in on the other side. Do you have me? Uh, uh, do you see me in there on Zoom? Let's see, so I can actually debate properly. Did it not come up? Let's, you gotta let me in the meeting.
Uh, yeah, you wanna, yeah, you're trying to come in through another portal here.
Yeah, so I can use my, so I can use my computer so I don't have to hold my phone like a total jerk. Okay, okay, here we go. Uh, let me exit out of here.
Yes, get that turned off there.
Nice fireplace.
Yeah, I know. You guys just saw the green screen. That, that's how we do it. All right, so, um, let's talk about Biden. You did talk about all that stuff. Come on, dude. It just sounds like a bunch of, I just can't believe you say that stuff, uh, and you're being honest when it comes to what, what Joe Biden.
Name something bad. Name something bad and we'll talk about it.
Well, I mean, I think that you saw the massive inflation was under the Biden presidency. I would say that the border was horrible. Yeah, the prices went up under the Biden presidency. You know that.
Do, do, do you blame Trump for, do you blame Trump for the economic downturn because of COVID? You don't blame him for that, do you?
Not necessarily, but I, I didn't agree. And that's another thing. I didn't agree with Donald Trump, uh, you know, being with the Johnson, Johnson family and shutting down the, the the country. So that's another thing that I.
But, okay, so, so if you're gonna give Joe Biden blame for the inflation, which I think is largely attributed to, um, COVID supply chain issues, um, then you have to blame Trump for the COVID, the humongous issues where, where originating under his tenure, the COVID originated under his tenure, and you have to blame him for the economic slowdown where thousands, millions of people lost their jobs under Trump. And so any blame you're gonna give Biden for COVID-related inflation, you have to give to Trump for COVID-related later on inflation and COVID-related job loss, COVID-related economic contraction, COVID-related lockdowns, all that stuff that you attribute to Biden. You don't, but the, the truth is, you don't attribute that to Trump and you don't give him any blame for that at all, even though it occurred under his presidency.
Well, I didn't like how we came out of COVID, but then they also said, oh, hey, Joe Biden had the biggest job growth. Well, we just lost all of our jobs. So I mean, don't you think that was a little disingenuous for saying that?
I, I think it is, I think it is disingenuous a little bit to say that. I, I think Trump would still have said it, even if, if you were him in that position.
Trump would have.
Even, even if, and I think that's fair of you to say, even if you would have accounted for the difference in the like regained jobs that were lost during COVID, he still comes out ahead in terms of job growth uh, over his presidency. So even if you account for that, he's coming out ahead. Real wages were starting to go up under, under Biden. Yeah. Prices were still high. Um, we didn't see deflation or anything and we did have high periods of inflation, but that wasn't Joe Biden's fault. Around the world, there was an inflation crisis and America weathered the storm better than so many other developed nations. And people can't see that, right? Because they see the prices of eggs and they get angry. And I understand that. That's a real economic cost. But it's not a reflection of Joe Biden's policies or his presidency.
Well, you agree, though, that there are some things out of the president's control? So you agree to that?
Yes, I agree. That's, that's why I said about Trump.
Yeah, I know. So I'm just saying, you know, we both agree on that, that even if they want to get stuff done, sometimes, you know, sometimes, uh, you know, there is, uh, red tape or whatever adjective you want to use.
A hundred percent. I do agree with that.
Okay, so we, we talked about Joe Biden. Now, you did say, you know, economically, you know, he did well, but I think you did concede earlier, though, that we didn't really necessarily like Joe Biden's geopolitical business dealings. I mean, when it comes to not supporting Israel or Hamas, uh, I, I mean, I, he kind of didn't pick a side, right? Because he's emboldened all the AIPAC money.
I, I think he picked.
Yeah, I think he would pick, I would agree that he picked more of Israel, but, but he was trying to be very, he's trying to tiptoe because he didn't want to upset, uh, people within his.
Why did he deny Israel? Why did he deny Israel? Like the problem I think was he let Israel bully him around in many ways. Not, not to say that you should ever support Hamas.
See, you nailed it though. You, you nailed it. Isn't Trump a lot harder to bully than Biden?
I think he has the opportunity to be easier or harder to bully for Israel, but he's not, he's not really showing any difference from Biden in that respect. He's not fighting Israel.
Well, he did get Eden Alexander. Biden, Biden could have got Eden.
I just love how liberals get around logic when they try to blame what happened with the economy. Oh, it was resilient. We had a soft landing. We weathered the storm way better than everybody else. And they want to blame, they want to contribute that to Joe Biden's economic policy? Are you freaking kidding me? Like we all know that there is a lot of overlap from one president to the next, for crying out loud. Yeah, we weathered that storm because Donald Trump's economy was booming so much in 2020. If we had a highly resilient economy under Donald Trump when he was leaving office because of Donald Trump's wild and chaotic policies. Yes, we weathered the storm, but you know what? I could contribute a lot of the problem with inflation to Joe Biden and his incompetent administration, right? Now, I, I will blame the economy going down. We, we don't blame that on Donald Trump because he said two weeks to slow the spread and that was it. He didn't shut down the country. The Democratic and Republican governors of the states shut down the damn country, right? But what Joe Biden did when he came back into office, a bunch of things, right? So they did not see this coming at all. You mean to tell me that the guy put in charge of the Department of Transportation was not being told about these supply chain issues? Oh, wait, hang on just a second. He wasn't even there. He was on paternity leave for crying out loud. That, which is an absurd statement, by the way, paternity leave. You might think, oh, well, his wife, no, they adopted his husband. Yeah, his husband. They adopted a child. He was on paternity leave for a supply chain crisis, decided, oh, I'm just not gonna come into work. They could have bolstered our supply chain, right? If these people would not have shut this thing down. If Joe Biden would have come in and said, look, we need to get the economy going up much faster. We're gonna have supply chain issues, blah, 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 blah. They, they could have softened that blow a whole hell of a lot more, right? Sure. Did they do something? Yes, they did something. The incompetency of the Biden administration just bled through with one, one of Joe Biden's economic advisors could not even explain why we print money and why we have US bonds for crying out loud. Yes, that was an entire video I covered on this channel right here. Of course, a lot of other people covered it too, but that was fascinating. The dude sitting there trying to explain why and he's like, uh, 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 well.
So why, why does the government even borrow?
Well, um, the, so the, I mean, again, some of this stuff gets, some of the language that the, some of the language and concepts are just confusing. I mean, the government definitely prints money and it definitely lends that money, which is why, the government definitely prints money. And then it lends that money by, by selling bonds. Is that what they do? They, 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 yeah, they, they, they sell bonds. Yeah, they sell bonds, right? Since they sell bonds and people buy the bonds and lend them the money. Yeah. So a lot of times, a lot of times, at least to my ear with MMT, the, the language and the concepts can be kind of unnecessarily confusing, but there is no question that the government prints money and then it uses that money to, uh, uh, so, um, yeah, I guess I'm just, I don't, I can't really talk. I don't, I don't get it. I don't know what they're talking about. Like, cause it's like, the government clearly prints money, does it all the time. And it clearly borrows, otherwise we wouldn't be having this debt and deficit conversation. So I don't think there's anything confusing there.
It was like he glitched out for crying out loud. It was an absurd thing to see, to watch. One of the President of the United States economic advisors not being able to explain economics for crying out loud. It was just an absurdity, right? But you know, not only all of these things, but I love how people try to attribute legislation to the president for crying out loud. That, that's an absurd statement. The president is not a legislator. However, they do sign off on these things, but Joe Biden comes in, all right, we just took this massive economic hit. What did he do? Oh, he increased deficit spending. Yes, that's a great idea, right? I think the whole idea, Trump coming in and with the, with that rescue package or whatever, the, the money, the, the 2,000 bucks he sent out to everybody. I think that was completely unnecessary, right? If you want to send something to small businesses to keep them afloat, go right ahead, be my guest. We need small business. But everybody doesn't need this money, for goodness sakes. That was, I think that was a mistake. It is what it is. But do you think it's a good idea to go ahead and do that again? That's what Joe Biden did. Comes in, increases deficit spending to like insane numbers. He doubled the annual deficit spending, right? It went from less than a trillion dollars to Joe Biden's last year, which was his last fiscal year, 1.8 trillion dollars, right? It went from 900 and I forget the exact numbers, 980 billion dollar deficit spending under Donald Trump, right? To 3.3 trillion. Well, that was COVID, okay? 3.3 trillion that year. That's an absurd number, okay? Then the next year, you think it would, it should go back after COVID's over with. It should go back to just under a trillion dollars, but it didn't. 1.5 trillion dollars. The next year, you think, well, maybe he'll reduce the deficit again. He constantly talked about reducing the deficit, but did he do that? No, it went to 1.7 trillion dollars and then to 1.8. All Joe Biden did was wreck this economy. And then Donald Trump comes in and he's like, okay, I need to pick up the pieces here. And then immediately, right? This debate was three months ago. They're instantly thinking that, oh, for some reason, Donald Trump can come in and all of a sudden turn the economy around? They're trying to blame us being on the brink of recession on Donald Trump. Like it takes years to get the, the policies of one president to get them to rolling, right? It takes at least a year to start, to start seeing the effects of the legislation from economic policy and your economic policy just in general. Takes at least a year for that to happen. Why? It's amazing that we're already seeing quarter three GDP growth at 3.3%. I just covered that news article the other day. That's amazing. All the economic indicators, right? Like what they were talking about earlier, like consumer confidence is way up. The unemployment is pretty good right now. There's many, many economic indicators that say that what, what Donald Trump is doing is moving us in the right direction, right? The, the stock market recovered totally. It's at high, it's at record high levels. Of course, you know, that's not the only indicator, but once again, folks, I think what Donald Trump is doing, at this point, we can at least look and say something that he's doing is working. Something he's doing is working because we're, we're completely out of being in danger of recession. We're completely out of that and we're moving in the right direction. If we can maintain what we've got going on right now, once again, like I was saying in my video the other day, if we can get another quarter, like the next quarter of close to 3% GDP growth, I think that will be the final nail in the coffin, right? Cause then it'll be a year, right? Donald Trump will have been in office for a year. I think that'll be a good indicator of where this economy is gonna go. And hopefully we get that, but we'll have to wait and see. Once again, still a wait and see because it takes a while for economic policy to come into effect, to show up into the numbers. I love it, y'all. I really do. And I think I've been rambling for a pretty good while. So I want y'all to let me know what y'all think about all this down in the comment section. Who do you think was the better president? Was it, was it Joe Biden weekend at Bernie's or was it Donald Trump, the economic hawk coming in and just bull in a china shop, if you will? Y'all let me know what y'all think. Y'all don't forget to smash that like button for me. Subscribe if you're new around here and you like what you heard. I'd love to have you guys on board. Share this video anywhere and everywhere you can. That would be great. Sign up, become a member. That's the best way to help this channel expand and grow and prosper, y'all, and get the message out about how we're being manipulated by corporate press heavily, folks, heavily. But y'all do all that for me and y'all remember, sorry, I'm having swallowing problems here. It might, I'm trying to like burp and swallow all at the same time and it's rough, but y'all remember that God is always with us and he loves each and every one of you out there, even if you don't know him. He loves you, but y'all try to have a good day and stay logistical. Peace.